Prayer and pledge led by Councilmember Keaton Fish.
A pledge allegiance to the delight of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thankful for Goddard, Kansas, thankful for the opportunity to continue to grow. Lord, I pray that you would just bless this space with your presence, God, and allow us to make decisions tonight that are informed and absolutely best for the future of this community. It's in your name we pray.
Okay, we got another executive session. Do we have any questions with the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Citizen comments. Who'd like to come up? Angie, the star.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. I'm Angie Nance with the Goddard Chamber, and I just want to give you a brief update on Fall Festival as we are getting very, very close. And so, first of all, we do have our buttons in. You can buy these in person at Goddard Central Wine and Liquor Spirits. Get it wrong every time, sorry. And also at Ace Hardware. But you can also still get these online. If you order them online, then your name is put into a chance to win a meet and greet, so that's the perk of ordering them online. And then we will be announcing, we'll call times to pick buttons up if you did order them online. You only have two weeks left to get those for $30, and they go up to $50 on October 1st, so encourage people to get those soon as possible. Just want to clarify a couple of things that we're hearing, but you must have a button to get into the concert after 3:00 PM. So the concert area and the beer garden will be fenced. It will be screened, and you will not be able to see the concert if you don't buy a button. You will not be very close, and no outside coolers or beverages will be allowed at any time during the Fall Festival. So don't plan on bringing a cooler and hanging out outside the fence. It won't be allowed for safety purposes, and also bring your own chair. And then lastly, we are in the process of submitting our Fall Festival guide this week, so last chance for sponsorships if anybody's interested. Tickets are selling, and we're very, very excited, so just a few more weeks. And thank you again to the City of Goddard for supporting all of our awesome community events.
I got a question. So how many tickets you think we've sold so far?
We are just over about, little over a thousand.
Okay, good. You mentioned some about banners earlier. How, what are the dimensions of the banners?
I would have to...
That's cool. Let me just send...
It's an eight foot by three foot.
Okay.
And they're $200.
Well, perfect. Well, thank you, Angie.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Anybody else going once, going twice? Sold. Okay, we're moving on. Item E1, appointment to the library board.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is the E1 Library Appointment. So Megan Conigs would love to serve the community of Goddard as a member of the Library Board. She believes libraries are vital to communities and would love to serve in that capacity. She believes she could bring a unique perspective as a lower elementary school teacher, and she thoroughly enjoys working with a team of people who are dedicated to making a difference in the lives of others. Megan was appointed to the City Council, or excuse me, to the Library Board, City Council, on February 21st of 2023 to fill a vacancy. If appointed, this would be her first of two four-year terms. So if you're filling a vacancy, then you can still serve two four-year terms. If she was repeating a four-year term, then she could only do it twice. So at this point, just looking for a motion approval to apply her to the Library Board.
Make a motion to approve Megan to the Library Board.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. All right, consent agenda. Do you guys have any questions with the consent agenda? Minutes and count payable. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item H1.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is H1 Assessment Proceeds for the Southeast Corridor Lift Station. So a quick background, during discussions of the Arbor Creek Development, it was decided that a portion of the costs associated with the lift station to serve the development would be assessed to about 172 lots in this development as authorized by Resolution Number 20-05. During a recent conversation, it discovered that these costs had not been assessed to those 172 lots, and as such, to fill the intent of the Resolution of Number 20-05, these lots need to be assessed $110,000. This requires a public notice to be published and a city newspaper letter sent out to all affected parties. The city will need to have a public hearing on the matter, and anyone desiring to speak can do so during this time. The letters sent to property owners will have the date of the public hearings stated, so they are aware. Since this is a collection for additional revenue, and the bonds have already been sold as permanent financing, it is advisable to not issue any additional bonds for $110,000 as it would incur additional cost for underwriting and sale, and it could be difficult to sell this bond due to being viewed as undesirable for such a low amount. It should be noted that not issuing bonds for this type of improvement is a deviation from standard Kansas law, and as such, the city could be required to issue bonds if legally challenged. If approved, the City Council would be established today on October 2nd as a date for the public hearing and letters of notice to be sent out to all affected property owners. So the City Council is considering assessing 110,000 to 172 lots in the Arbor Creek Development for a portion of the costs incurred for the construction of the Southeast Corridor Lift Station. Each lot will be assessed about $639.54. They have until November 3rd of 2023 to pay the mountain full or in part. After which, there will be 20 annual installments equaling about $31.97 per year or around $2.66 per month. Lots to be assessed are listed as follows, and these numbers are just general numbers. They may be higher. These are the following lots as listed in that original resolution. There's small costs for publication legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended City Council approve the resolution, the publication setting a public hearing, and the issuance of letters of notice for affected property owners for assessing the additional cost of $110,000 for the Southeast Corridor Lift Station. I mean, most, a motion and a second. We do have Kevin Cowan, Gilmore Bell, our bond attorney, and Brett Shorin, the Stiefel Nichols, to be represented here as well.
Ryan, do you want to give an overview on why we, the history on how we got here, or do you want me to? Mine is always going to be more flavorful, so I'm asking you.
Well, I'm, I'm, I love flavorful.
Okay. So, all right, so the history behind this is we had this $1.3 million lift station that the City of Goddard paid for, and the agreement was that this Arbor Creek addition, Phase 1, was going to pay $110,000 towards that lift station. And that did not happen. What happened was someone in the last administration sent an email waiving that cost, and the city had to eat it. Well, that is not appropriate, and that's not correct, and so now we are having to go back and fix what was done wrong in the past. And so now, these neighbors are going to have to get a notice saying their special assessments are going up this certain amount, but you know, when you make a mistake as an organization, you have to go back and fix it. You can't just... The City of Goddard as a whole should not eat $110,000 in cost. So if anybody has any questions, that's the general overview.
I would just clarify, he wasn't waived.
Okay, there we go. All right. Any questions?
Sorry to be...
No, 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 that's, that's probably the right word.
Yeah, and he wasn't waived, because we never voted on him.
Yeah, we never voted on it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, he wasn't voted on.
Not to waive.
To assess it.
Yeah, to assess it, and it was never assessed.
But then, the decision was made not to pursue that assessment at the time.
That's the right words. Okay. Do we have any questions? Any comments? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution and the publication setting a public hearing and the issuance of letters of notice for affected affected property owners for assessing the additional cost of $110,000 for the Southeast Corridor Lift Station.
Motion by Sarah.
I'll second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Very good. This is item H point 2. This is the Reinvestment Housing Incentive District Act Resolution. So the Reinvestment Housing Incentive District, RHID, is a program designed to assist in the development of housing for areas approved by the Kansas Department of Commerce. The program allows city reimbursed developers for eligible costs incurred during the development of specific tracts of land identified by the City Council's IDL for future housing. The increment and add valorum taxes generated from the value of new housing units would be used to provide reimbursement, with the exception of 1.5 mils from the state levy, 28 mils from the school district. The school district and the county have veto authority to deny a development. An RHID tract will allow the city to supplement the capital stack for development to incentivize the creation of desirable housing developments. City Council is reviewing a resolution to establish a geographic boundary with multiple tracts of a possibility of RHID. Step 1 is the preparation of a housing needs analysis, which was completed by the city based on the June 2023 Goddard Housing Study produced by WSU. This is Exhibit H point 2C. Step 2 is to adopt a resolution establishing the RHID, and the city sends the resolution and the housing needs assessment to Secretary of Commerce. This is Exhibit H point 2A. Step 3, the Secretary of Commerce agrees the housing needs analysis, and the city can proceed with establishment of a district. The housing needs analysis summary is Exhibit H point 2D. Step 4, the city developer collaborates to finalize a rural housing incentive district development plan and development agreement outlined how the development will proceed and how it will be financed. The city publishes a resolution to call a public hearing, and the development agreement is sent to the Board of County Commissioners and the school district. Step 5, 37 days after adoption of the resolution, which is number 2, the city presents the development plan, and any interested party may be heard. At conclusion of the hearing, the governing body may establish a district by ordinance, which is subject to a 30-day veto period. So there's a lot going on here. Feel free to ask questions on this. We do have, as mentioned, Kevin Cowan and Gilmore Bell here. Brett Shorin is our financial advisor, and Ryan Peck, City Attorney. Reimbursement of costs must be deemed eligible in the following categories: land acquisition, site preparation, sanitaries, storm sewers, drainage conduits, channels and levies, street grading paving, street lighting fixtures, connections and facilities, gas, water, heating, electrical services in the playground, lane sidewalks, water mains and extensions, permanent improvements for the upper levels of downtown buildings with 5 years or older. So this would generally probably be used in this one. So this is a kind of an example of some numbers. So like I said, feel free to ask questions. This is just kind of a rough outline. But hypothetically, if you had a parcel or a tract of land that was $20,000, and we're assessing it at 30% because it is vacant, but it's vacant ag, then it'll be 30% assessment, then that would be around $6,000. General property tax levied against it would be around that, would be 810.23, which would be 135 mils. And so the breakdown would be as follows with a dollar amount. Goddard would be making $187.85 every year, and over a 25-year period, we'd make $4,600. And so if we took into account a development that was $15 million, for example, a residential development, and it was assessed at 11.5, then the breakdown would be as follows. At 31 mils, we'd be getting $54,000 a year. And if we took a portion of that dollar amount that we were capturing in difference between what we had with the 800, with the assessment at 30%, and we split it, let's say hypothetically at 50%, to reimburse a portion of the cost, the city would still be collecting over $675,000 as opposed to the $4,600 that we were collecting without the development. So it's sort of a tit for tat. I'm sort of a give and take in that way. This is our proposed 2035 limit, sort of generally speaking, of how we're assuming we're going to be growing over the next couple of years. This is our current city limit in orange. We've identified certain tracts of land for potential development. These ones, this one in particular, and these couple over here are all what's called by right zoning. So hypothetically, if you wanted to put an apartment complex on any of the red tracts of land, it's called by right. So that means it's already zoned, and you can do the apartment immediately, and so that's something to be taken into account. These other ones are under consideration for future development potentially. These ones would have to be negotiated. These ones in green is something that we can consider for future annexation. Right now, with a reinvestment incentive district, all the tracts of land for consideration have to be within the city limits. So these green ones could be considered as a potential future annexation because you can use the reinvestment incentive district to kind of entice property owners into annexing it to the city limits, which is a unique tool because Wichita is exempt from using RHID, where we can use the RHID to entice future property owners to annex for future development. Financially, there is none. Legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended City Council approve the resolution which establishes the reinvestment housing incentive district for the recommended tracts of land and/or any additional tracts of land as they see fit. I know there might be some questions related to this, so feel free to ask at this time, and the maps are available. The resolutions, you've probably noticed, are empty for the exhibits because we have to actually have your approval to add those legal descriptions and then that final map to send off to the Secretary of Commerce.
So what step, and you've lined out some steps, step 1, housing needs assessment, step 2, which step are we at?
Right now, this is step 2.
Okay. So basically, we're saying, hey, Secretary of Commerce, can we do this?
Yeah, and feel free to chime in at any time.
No, that's...
That sums it up.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, making it simple for me.
Yeah, and each, each particular development, so can you go back to the map? Even put the green in there, because I'd like to add some more green into this. But let's say, just because we send this map off to the state, then whatever that development has, has an individual per development, a development agreement with the City of Goddard. So we're saying, hey, this is kind of the areas we want to incentivize to grow in Goddard. And then if it were to be approved, then it comes back to the city, and they say, hey, we want to put homes, we want to put an apartment complex. And then the city in that particular development hashes out the development agreement, okay, we'll give X amount of percent for this, X amount of percent for that. So we still have further control going forward. But what this is pretty much doing is sending it off to Topeka saying, hey, we want to incentivize growth in these areas.
All right, so once Topeka approves it, then we're going to, you would have to hash out a development agreement for every single... So hypothetically, right now, you can't approve any of the greens to be in the RHID. They can only be in if they're in the city limit. So you can only really hash out development agreements with these ones. But let's say, for example, we do have Mr. Rick Warner who wants to put that apartment complex over here. So then we would work with them to establish a development agreement. And then, once we've established a development agreement, we set a public hearing, and we have basically an opportunity for people to speak. That development agreement is going to list out how this project is being cash flowed. That's typically what you would see in what's called a capital stack, which is when you have a development, you have debt, certain types of debt. You have what's called primary debts, when you go to a bank and you ask for a loan. Then you have what's called a mezzanine loan, which is basically a second mortgage. Then you have primary equity, which are investments, which that's where we would be. And then you have principal equity, which comes from the developer. That's how you cash flow a development. And so this basically incentivizes a portion of that capital stack, so there's less debt that has to be acquired from the bank. So then it looks more desirable for that project to move forward and they can get financing. And that's a way that you can actually incentivize specific types of development if you want to see them. Historically, we haven't seen those types of developments before, like apartments, or condos, or townhomes, or things of that nature.
Can you go back to all of the things that qualify for the RHID?
Yes. So one thing that I think is going to be huge, I don't know if most people understand, this, I believe, happened last year. The state of Kansas allowed this RHID program to go from 10,000 in population for cities to help incentivize to 60,000 in population. And what this allows the City of Goddard to do is we keep on having a problem with growth dragging our infrastructure, the water, the sewer mains. So if we create a district and it gets approved by Topeka, then we can not just use our dollars, but we can use the school districts, counties, states, and so we get, I think, everything but...
Not the states.
No, not the states, not the states?
Correct. They hold under the...
Okay, and the bond, and the school bonds. And the school bonds, but then we get the schools. Correct?
That you can get.
We, we don't touch the school bonds.
Yeah, the school has got some, so basically 28, according to, according to Paul Sinelli, they have basically what's called 28 protected mills. And so you're only really allowed to touch the school districts that are unprotected, which would be about 26.949. So you can touch this 26, you can't touch this 28.
And 20 of that is the statewide school levy for operation and maintenance, but the bond and interest is not part of that. So there would be a portion of the school district levy that creates part of this income.
So, and the most simplest form is now the City of Goddard, if approved, we have a lot more dollars that we can use to invest in infrastructure to continue to grow, and that's huge. I mean, most people don't understand what we're getting ready to do, or hopefully we're getting ready to do, because this is going to really help the city grow, and other cities across the state. But I think just in my last month, working with different engineers and everybody, this is all pretty new to everybody else as well. So we're all kind of learning there. Is there any questions, I guess? I guess along with this, I need to put a disclosure here, right? Do you want to do the disclosure, Micah?
Yes, yes, there has to be a disclosure here that some of these lots are in the Goddard Galleria, which is under the Dugan Development. I reached out to Dwayne Dugan to ask for these ones specifically to be put in because these have what's called by right zoning, which means that you can put in apartments immediately. So this is not something that Mayor Larkin asked for, it's something I asked for. I reached out to Dwayne Dugan as a developer to see if he would be inclined to have a rural housing incentive district, or, sorry, reinvestment incentive district, they changed the name, in this area, because this is also in our Star Bond district. So any apartments that go in here would actually help with the Star Bond development. So we have some GO bonds that are in this area. The property taxes from here that we collect would go to paying off the GO bonds, but also we would have, if we put apartments in there, we would be collecting more on water rates. So for example, when we have every, anybody who's connected to our water system is paying for water service, both water and sewer. So the more developments that we can have in this area will actually help spread the cost, future infrastructure needs that we would have. And so this is something that would also help working in tandem with density for helping support commercial development. So when I say by right, it means that they could build an apartment over here tomorrow without having to go through rezoning, which is called the entitlement process, and so it actually helps expedite that process faster.
So anyway, I just want you all to know that there's a few parcels in here that, Dug got the big D next to their name, I guess.
Did you hear from Mr. Dugan about it?
Yes, yes, so we've, we typically reach out to most developers when we're talking with them. So I haven't spoken with Ben Healy yet about this possibility, but he's already plotted this for patio homes, for apartments, et cetera. So it's already zoned as a PUD. It's going through the process right now for finalization of the PUD, which is a planned unit development. This one over here is in the Goddard Star Bond over by the Genesis. And so this one is already zoned, general commercial. This is already zoned, general commercial. So those ones could have apartments put in immediately, which would actually help the city.
Now, can you expand out, Micah, to the green? Let's explain that more, and I'd like to try to add a little bit more brown in this green area as well.
So the green is, just to be clear, the green is theoretical, because you can only approve tracts of land that are in the orange, which are already in the city limits. Green, they're outside the city limits. So we are only really would be considering the green as a theoretical situation. If hypothetically, somebody wanted to annex, then we could say, we would consider amending the resolution to include you into that RHID district. Right now, they can't be included. It can only be these people can be included because they're already in the city limits. These people would have to be enticed to annex into the city limits, and then you would have to consider amending the resolution to include them in the RHID as a potential incentive tool.
If we get that far, does that go back to the state with the new property area, or is that something that...
Back to the state, yeah. So if we incentivize, I know that's a lot of different moving parts, but let's say hypothetically, any of the ones that are in green wanted to join, then we would say, hey, City Council, do you want to amend the resolution? If you say, sure, we'll amend the resolution if they want to annex, then we annex them. Or prior to annexing them, because it would be contingent upon the approval by the state, then we would send that amended resolution to the state to say, are you guys okay with us adding this extra district? Which generally, I don't know if we would get a lot of pushback on that from the state, because the state generally wants to see more development. And so then we would be able to annex them into the property limits and then talk about future development.
How, what's your plan to reach out to the property owners in the green partial, in the green partials?
I would just show up at the front door.
Okay.
I would explain everything I explained, no, I...
Maybe all over Facebook.
Yeah.
Does anybody know who this guy is?
Yeah, no, I mean, basically, we would just start one at a time, reaching out, seeing if they feel inclined. If they are really not inclined at all, there's no point to discuss that. But if some of them do feel inclined, then we could bring it to City Council, hey, this property owner contingent upon you guys approving the resolution, the state okaying it, amending the resolution, they want to be annexed, and here's a petition to be annexed. And so then that would be a very easygoing discussion at that point.
I want to add a little bit more green to the map. So we did a study back two years ago, I think it was, Harland, the Bothman Study?
Yes.
And in the Bothman Study, we already have some of the development where Mr. Kelsey is off of 167th and Pond 8 that was in one of their corridors, but there's a whole corridor that was in the Bothman Study that isn't in the rural water district. And it's the southwest corridor. Can you kind of show the region, Micah? Just all of that, yeah, area, kind of down the 31st Street, you know, that whole area. And that is pretty much like the ideal spot for the City of Goddard to grow. The reason why is it's not in the rural housing incentive district, and it's kind of open. It's pretty, pretty open kill.
It's not in the rural water district, is what...
And it's not in the rural water district.
But I'm not 100%. I mean, some of it, Harland, is some of that in the rural water district or not?
I, now off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I have a map in my office that I can look up.
I didn't think it was. I thought the stuff that Marv was, wasn't, wasn't.
It is.
It is. And then the stuff to the west wasn't.
Some of this is not in the rural water district number four, so that we don't have to negotiate with the rural water district to work out a development agreement. Every time we go to do a development with the rural water district, we have to end up paying, or the developer has to end up paying. And so anytime you do a development that's not in the rural water district number four, it saves us some cost.
Now, along with all of this, we have the new Rick Warner project right there off of 199th. So where 6S Sports Bar and Grill is going to be, just right to the north of that, they're wanting to put apartment complexes. Now, we have to first get approval from the state to allow that into the rural housing incentive district. And then they approach the city after that approval, hopefully, and then we hash out the agreement between Mr. Warner and the City of Goddard.
And we have a public hearing, and then the Board of County Commissioners and the school district get a letter outlining what that development agreement is, and then they have a veto period.
A whole lot to throw, but it's really good. I mean, because we're able to use other funding from other municipalities to help with our infrastructure and get things that we wouldn't necessarily have. Do you guys have any questions? Concerned?
Ken, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to add that the next step, I think it was step 5, involves noting the actual detail of a particular development.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to add that the next step, I think it was step five, involves note the actual detail of a particular development. And you do that to give notice from the board of county commissioners and the school district, and then they have an opportunity to find that it would be adverse to them. And if so, your plan couldn't proceed. So there, as the mayor was just saying, there's a lot going on here, and there will have to be a lot of communication with those other taxing entities as individual projects develop.
So this is pretty much just saying, do we wanna do, first send off the district for Mr. Warner? And also, do we want to start off with the yellow?
Yeah, so basically, this first resolution would be going to the state, saying, you guys wanna consider these tracts of land in what's called a reinvestment housing incentive district. If the state's like, that looks good to me, they'll send it back and say, yes, we're okay with that. And then the city needs to sit down with Mr. Rick Warner and hash out what's called a pro forma, which means for sake of the form. And it's basically a cost analysis and breakdown of expenses and what you're proposing, and what you're hoping to get in terms of taxes from the city, taxes from the school district, taxes from the county. And as mentioned, it could be a fifty percent breakdown, or something along this line, where you're committing a certain amount of dollars. And then we would have to see, is it reasonable? We'd also have to see, is it eligible based on what you're proposing? Because it can only go towards housing, which would be, you know, apartments and whatnot. And then if it's agreeable, we would bring that development agreement to the city either probably during, either before, as like a preview, or during the public hearing to say, this is what we've hashed out with Mr. Rick Warner, what do you guys think? And during that public hearing, people can comment. And the school district and board of county commissioners can give, can give their comment feedback.
Any questions?
Is that map on our agenda? I'm asking.
No. Which one?
That map?
No, this one's not. Your agenda's got four attachments, most of them are resolutions.
I don't see the negative in us saying, let's propose this to the state. I think there's a lot of steps and catchalls if there is something that concerns people.
There's a lot of checks and balances, and ultimately, as mentioned, the school district and the board of county commissioners have the veto authority. So if you guys were even hypothetically a hundred percent behind one project versus another, if the school district vetoes it, then it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, every taxing authority has to give its thumbs up in order for it to go through. So, there's a hypothetical, nothing can get approved. So, this is just the first step, if we wanna start it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it hurts to at least start the process, see if we can get the school district and the county commissioner on board.
And ultimately, everybody benefits after whatever that percent, you know, when the city hashes out, okay, I'm just throwing a hypothetical out there. The city hashes out, twenty percent goes to water and sewer, right? And ten percent goes for whatever, I don't know. And then once that's paid off, then you have a hundred percent, then it goes back to all the taxing authorities, correct? So, do I have a motion, or?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Aubrey?
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much. We will add these legal descriptions to the resolution, there's a map, and then I'll be working with bond counsel to send it off to the state, and you will get feedback.
Perfect. How long do we think, Kevin? How long does it take?
One thousand years.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's pretty direct. I mean, probably within a couple of weeks of sending it.
Oh, really?
I would expect, probably a month, if that's what it is.
Okay.
So we could potentially bring it back to you in the second meeting in October.
Okay. So if they were to hypothetically approve it before we even possibly wanna amend it, you know, and add more ground into it, could we go back and say, okay, this is, I guess, our second one?
Yeah, it'd be a resolution with an amendment, but it'd take-
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know that it has to be an amendment, it could be another resolution.
Just a whole nother-
Approve that one that you have, and we're gonna send you another one, and you take whatever time you need for that one.
Okay, okay.
This is item H point three, so this is a Tanganyika Wildlife Park Addition Plan Unit Development Final. So Bothman Company submitted a final plan unit development PUD layout for Tanganyika Wildlife Park. This is step four of four steps for final approval and adoption of a PUD. The PUD is considered a custom zoning classification. The first step was the public notice in hand, which happened on December ninth of twenty nineteen, before the planning commission. Jim Fowleson is representative, showed a concept idea for the planning commission consideration. Second step was a preliminary plat, which was approved by the planning commission on December thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. The third step was the final plat, which was approved by the planning commission on December thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. The final plat was then approved by the city council on January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two. This is step four for consideration and adoption by the city council. The planning commission approved the final PUD on Monday, September eleventh, and now the city council decided they wanna approve the PUD as presented. It is appro, if it is approved, an ordinance will be published in the city newspaper, just like any other zoning. City council is considering approving a final plan unit development layout for the Tanganyika Wildlife Park Addition. Total land area is around four point seven million, total acres about a hundred eight, maximum lot coverage, there is no limitation. Maximum building height sixty, access points from Hawkins one, access points from one ninety-ninth one. We did give them sixty-foot right-of-way for access to one ninety-nine through our land, during our land swap agreement. Future animal exhibits, restaurants, animal barns, and outdoor entertainment are being proposed, generally speaking. This is the final plan unit development, it definitely looks better on your agenda packet, it gets somewhat pixelated when we export it. This is a concept rendering provided by Tanganyika to kinda outline some of the future proposed developments in that area. Financially, there is a small cost for publication, since it would be an ordinance legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended city council waive the reading of the ordinance, and then two, approve the final plan unit development for the Tanganyika Wildlife Park Addition with voice plus roll call. If you do have any questions, I do believe Matt Paltz is in, audience, he does want to speak, or talk about any of the future development that he has proposed.
I got no questions, it all seems good to me.
You got anything to say about it?
All pretty dragged forward, everyone's to do more things, so that's what we want.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Keaton?
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the final planned unit development for the Tanganyika Wildlife Park Addition.
Motion by Keaton?
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
The ordinance, nine thirty-five.
Thank you very much. This is item H four, this is the Hawkins Lane Annexation Agreement. So the city desires to annex South Hawkins Lane in order to pave and maintain it. State law requires that the road is to be annexed, the budding properties must be annexed as well. Discussion about annexation occurred on April third of twenty twenty-three, with the city council deciding they were in favor of annexing the three properties with the owner's consent. Discussion between the property owners Tanganyika Wildlife Park and the city occurred on June ninth of twenty twenty-three. From that meeting, the city drafted annexation agreements for the properties located on South Hawkins Lane. The petitions were circulated to the property owners and TWP for comments and feedback. City staff met with some of the property owners to answer questions and gather comments with the city council. Comments with the property owners are listed in the analysis portion of the agenda item, as well as questions for the purpose of clarity. The city council is reviewing comments and questions regarding the annexation properties along South Hawkins Lane. The seven questions right here are reflections of the property owners. So number one, they wanted to know if the mill levy currently applied to the property could be expressed in the contract agreement, seven point eight nine three. They also wanted to make sure the language expressed would run in perpetuity of the property, which it was mentioned a hundred years. Section A lists the duration, in perpetuity being forever. Seven one five South Hawkins Lane said there were multiple people on the deed besides Jill Barnes. There was Ryan Barnes, Carol Dooley, revocable trust, Norm Dooley, revocable trust, and they are asking if they need signature pages and notarized signatures as well, which that's an attorney question. They wanna know the manner in which they'd be compensated for the difference expressed in the agreement. It's probably gonna be a rebate, most likely, if this were to move forward. They want language stating that TWP would not put any more signs on Hawkins, they want that to be expressly listed in the agreement. And they want language stating that approaches will be part of the pavement improvement. So I believe Harlan Foraker, the city engineer, included a cost estimate of what that would look like. They want language, they want a language stating that the city will regrade and maintain the ditches, and it was mentioned removing excess sand. I'm not really sure if that's in relation to, but I think they mentioned grading it and then removing sand. So those are some of the questions and comments that they had from the property owners. Financially, no legally approved as a form, it is recommended city council just review the annexation agreement, questions, comments, and direct staff accordingly. We do have Burke Brandon, Board of directors director, we have Harlan Foraker, city engineer, Matt Long, city treasurer, Ryan Peck, city attorney. So if you do have any questions or thoughts.
Can you go back to the questions? So, the seven point eight nine three, the first one, whose mill levy is that?
That's the county.
So we do not set the county's mill levy, we cannot control the county's-
That's the county, that's the township.
Attica Township.
Yeah, township. Okay, do we control Attica Township? So we don't control Attica Township, we can't do anything with that, they can change that at their will. So we can say that, that the county, or the township, mill levy will be assessed as per, it has been, but we can't specify a number, correct? Because we can't tell the township what they're going to-
I think, I think the, what our agreement, what we suggested was that we would only levy the amount of the current township levy-
Yes.
As our portion, instead of levying our full portion, levying our full portion, which is thirty-one point three on nine bills, we would only levy seven point eight nine three. And I think they are asking that that number, seven point eight nine three, be the number that we levy going forward, regardless of whether the township raises or decreases theirs, which we would presumably have been using as the number going forward to determine what they get charged. So, if we were going to, so if this year, the township levy is seven point eight nine three, that would be, we would basically be refunding them the difference between what we levy and that amount. And next year, if the township raises it to eight point oh two one, or whatever, we would still refund them the difference between what we levy and seven point eight nine three, instead of the difference between what we levy and what the new township rate was. The township rate's gonna go off completely for them, we were just gonna use the township rate as the sort of benchmark to determine how much we would-
Okay, so currently, you pay township, but when you become a city resident, you don't pay township?
Yeah, because they'll, they'll be out of the township and in the city then.
But their-
That makes so much more sense now, as to why.
But their, but their taxes will go up on school district, whatever else.
The, there's, there are-
We can't control that.
Yeah, we're already-
I mean, we can't control that, so, yeah.
We're just saying the city, the city will assess that portion only of the city tax.
They're gonna, they're gonna have to pay the full amount, because we can't change it and actually get billed, because that's the county. But we can refund them the difference.
Okay, so what we're saying is, your city mill levy will be seven point eight nine three, you'll get the difference back.
Right, that's right.
Okay, that makes so much more sense now.
But we can't, and as, as Matt Long mentioned, that we can't, you know, we can't tell the county not to collect the full amount, so we're gonna have to rebate them.
And then we would do-
We would have to rebate them every year, presumably, and they want that expressed in the agreement, that how are they gonna get that difference?
Sure.
That's fine.
Because like, we get, like, I pay my taxes, and then however many, like, I pay my taxes in May.
Yeah.
How much later then do you guys get your payment from the county, city, state, whoever?
Now, we, so, we receive, well, we receive it five, it's five or six times a year. We get the two big payments in January and then in July, because, you know, the first bill goes out in June, the second, or not June, the first one goes out in November, I think, and then the second goes out, whatever it is. But we get our big chunk then. So essentially, what we would do is, we would just have them submit verification that they paid their taxes, and that can either be through, you know, direct payment or through a mortgage company or whatever, just whatever that is, just submit that, and we'll kind of check for the difference.
Okay.
Okay, and the one hundred years, in my meeting with them, I believe it couldn't, our attorneys were saying that we couldn't write a contract for a hundred years? It had to be ninety-nine years, is that correct? There was some, some legal jargon that says you can't bind a contract for a hundred years.
Possibly, they're, they're essentially wanting it in perpetuity. Because I think, I think, you know, some of the concepts that were discussed, the idea that as long as these folks remain the owners of the property, any concessions would apply, but in the event they sold, then all of that would be off as to, uh-
No, that was, yeah, that-
But they're wanting it in perpetuity.
We had a, we had a discussion, me, Terry, and Mr. Fowleson, the property owners, had a discussion about, one of their concerns was, well, if they do try to go sell it, then that would hurt their selling ability, because it's at a new tax rate. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, this road is simply a road that the city of Goddard wants to pave. And we're, we're, I've talked to them, I've wanted to do it. Now, I don't know how we haven't gotten signed agreements yet, because of the verbiage, apparently, it's not specific. But I'm at the point to where what we discussed, we still have to discuss here. And I don't know if it's gonna get approved by these other council members. And I'm at the point to where I don't, I don't really know how to proceed forward. I, I need something from you guys to tell us, what we discussed, is that what you guys will agree to?
Okay, and this is what we said that we agreed to. After we had a meeting with you and then Micah, it took about a month to get the agreement back to us from the attorney. And I think about a month ago, and then we talked to them again about, about these issues specifically, and we haven't seen anything else.
But if, if the council were to agree to these terms, I'm saying if, because I can't speak for them. But if you guys would give us a signed agreement?
If this verbiage-
With that verbiage?
With this verbiage, I would then feel that it was adequate enough that I would take it to my attorney for review, and then based on his recommendation, I would sign.
What's the legal definition of in perpetuity? Perpetuity in one hundred years are two different terms, right?
It's basically forever. A hundred years is longer than any of us here.
Not, not that I want to do this, because I do want to work with our neighbors. We can just go in and annex this if we want to, right? If it's that important to us that we wanna pave this road, that we wanna pay three hundred thirty thousand, or half of three hundred thirty thousand, whichever number it is, to pave this road to help a business that brings in thousands, I don't know, how many visitors do you bring in every year, ma? Of people to Goddard to buy from our businesses, I'm just-
Yes, I believe we would have the right-
We have the right to just annex it, to say, hey, you get to pay taxes now, you get to do, okay. And you can ask us for water and sewage and all those things.
And with the, the PUD that we just finished, Tanganyika's getting bigger and better by the year, so it's becoming a destination. I was there a couple of weeks ago, and there was a family from South Carolina that came just to see Tanganyika. So it's becoming enough of a destination that it's bringing people to our community.
I don't disagree, I think that's why the, the whole point was to try to get this road done, you know? And it's taking time, of course, I, I knew it was gonna take time. But at this point, I mean, we need to hash it out, get it quick, because we need to either say, we're gonna pave this road, or we, we need to take this money and do something else with it, is what, is what I'm getting down to.
I, I think ultimately, you guys have to decide, are these demands worth a term of policy standing? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm fine with number one. Number three, like you said, is a lawyer question. Four's, we've discussed. Five, I think Matt agreed to. I don't know, the, the number we got, that includes the approaches, correct?
Harlan, do you wanna answer that question?
I think, I think we did put an estimate of paving the approaches to the right-ofway. We don't have the authority to go on private property to pave an approach. But it would be paving the approach from the edge of the new road to the right-ofway.
And then number seven, do we have a vote on what the regrade and maintaining the ditches and removing excess, excess sand and all that, is that-
I mean, once we, once we got it paved, I would think that that sand, I mean, if there's- Once we, once we got it paved, I would think that that sand, I mean, if there's sand in there, we would, we would probably try to clean it out with that project.
It would be.
To make it gray, and then the sand problem would probably go away because the road's paved.
So it wouldn't be a huge extra added expense.
I don't know if we're talking about six inches or six feet, but I assume it's a small amount.
Okay.
I don't think we have any problem going in and removing the sand, and of course, if it's our road, we'll make tape.
So I think, I think number two is the only one I am kinda hung up on. I think when the property sells, it should go to your, in the city of Goddard, you should go to regular taxes. Or maybe include wording, the taxes will stay at the seven point eight three, but if you request water and sewer, because it is in the verbiage that you can request water and sewer, the minute, when you request water and sewer, you now get to pay the full city assessed tax because you're asking for something from us. And that's what our normal citizens have to do, is they have to pay the assessed tax to have city and water and all those things. So I, I guess that's kinda where I'm coming in.
One question about, um, so doesn't the property owner pay for the water and sewer?
Feel free to come on up, guys, if you like.
Yeah, I'm fine with you guys. It's easier to hear you guys.
Can you come up?
Yeah, if you'd like.
So, yeah, that's how it works, like, well, see, traditionally, that's how it should work. Like Second Street, us, us repaving Second Street. Historically, when a road's paved, the homeowners pay for that road to be paved. Like anybody in St. Andrews, they pay specials for all their roads and stuff to be paved. We pay assessments for water and sewer and all that stuff. Um, at that time, in my mind, no, I'm not asking the five, three, four residents on that street if they want water and sewer to pay the full amount of what it costs to bring everything in. In my mind, that's not fair. But I would ask that at that time, if I, if that resident's saying, I want water and sewer, okay, you're going to the same tax rate that mill levy that everybody else in the city is paying.
No, we, we, we did discuss that if they wanted, I, yeah, I, you're, you're talking about the property tax, but we did discuss if they chose to bring water and sewer over to, over to them, they would pay for that.
The homeowner's.
Yeah, the property.
Oh, we think that's what we were told.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
We would have said. Now, you're talking about, if they choose to do that, then the property taxes go to the new rate.
Taxes go to the city rate because we're servicing the water and sewer.
We have three hundred thousand dollars to have water and sewer plus pay a thirty percent mill levy.
It's not a thirty percent mill levy. It's.
The current mill levy of the city.
Why number two was brought, was brought to us initially. We did not ask for that, correct?
I believe when you, you would actually brought it up, there'd be a hundred-year deal.
I do not recall saying a hundred years. I, it was.
I remember, I remember saying clearly here and over at Tanganika that we would do it because I remember the attorney said something about we couldn't do it for a hundred years. It was ninety-nine years, you know? Same thing, whatever. I know we're not, but, you know, legal jargon or whatever.
What we're gonna do.
But I, I guess I'm, I, I have to know what to direct staff for. Council, they need to tell us what they want. Sarah was talking about, you know, raising that, you know, if you guys choose to bring the utilities there, you guys are at the new mill levy, current with everybody else. Keaton, Aubrey, we, we just keep direction.
See, I didn't realize that the homeowners were saying if they asked for water and sewer, that it would be assessed. I did not realize that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for me, number two is, is the biggest hangup, um, just 'cause I don't, I don't know. For me, it's like seventy years from now. Let's, let's just say you guys were to move in ten, fifteen years, which I doubt will happen. You guys have a great gig. Where, where you're at, the spots are awesome. But let's say you guys move here in fifteen years, and then that family lives there for five years, and then the next family moves in, you know? Then it's like, okay, well, now we're, we're helping out somebody who moves, you know, five families from now. Why should they benefit from what you guys fought for? It's just kinda my, I, I don't want this to hold back Goddard in the future. But with what Sarah's saying about if they chose, if the new property owner chose, or the current property owner chose to bring in uh, the city's utilities and that kinda stuff, then that changes. I think I'm more comfortable with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean.
A lot of words real quick.
What, what we come up with ultimately has to be agreed by all three of those neighbors. And if we don't have an agreement by all three of those neighbors and a majority vote of this council, we don't have a deal. And if we don't have a deal, then what I need to know is, are we just gonna kill this deal and move on and take our money and go take our three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put it somewhere else in Goddard? I would like to do this deal. I wanna do this deal, but I don't wanna waste any more time. That's all I, I care about.
I'm fine with paving the road, like I said, for me, that, oh, the only, my concerns are, one, protecting the quality of life of the property that I'm highly invested in, and two, protecting the resale value of my home. Because it is a huge investment, obviously, for us. So, um, I, I have no.
Aubrey, sorry.
Put the road in or not, I don't care. Those are my concerns.
I hear ya. Just, I mean, two is, is my only hangup right now, too, but I think we need more language that dives in a little bit deeper.
What language do we want? What, do we want it to where it begins and ends with them?
It's how much do you want the referential property tax rate to last?
I guess that's the biggest question for me because I'm, I'm with you. When you resell a home, I mean, how does that hinder?
To want to begin.
Not potential to fire. I mean, I know, I mean, that's a question in my head. It's like, you know, if you happen to sell in ten years, what does that do to your potential fire?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I go for resale like now, too, after those deals, you know, which is probably.
Yeah, so you go to a property and all of a sudden they have all these expenses that, that you haven't normally dealt with, that, that they're. You, they don't make new land though, but, you know, so, um, there's probably a buyer there. But, I mean, that's where my thought process is. So the language of in perpetuity in a hundred years, I don't know what the, what the value of that is. I think it needs to be looked at more of, um, what's your strategy if you happen to have to sell it? And then I think that should die at that point. You know, I mean, either they assume those, um, those new costs or.
So do we want, do we wanna do that, number two, it pretty much begins and ends at the ownership of the current property owner? Because the, you drag in the utilities, that is very basic.
Yeah.
When, when you drag utilities, the, the property owner benefiting from those utilities gets assessed whatever it costs. We bond it out. We pretty much carry the loan, but they are making the payments. Now, we're hung up on number two, the hundred years. Do we want to proceed with the hundred years, or do we want to change it to where it begins and ends with their ownership of the property? Once they sell it, it goes to the new current rate that everybody else is at.
Okay, so here, here's my thought. Here's my question. Say your house is worth five hundred thousand dollars. What annually, tax-wise, are we going to be rebating them if their house is worth five hundred thousand dollars? Does that make sense, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. Because basically, like, you go to sell your house, the new owner, you know, you can say, my current property taxes are this, but because of this special agreement we have with the city, you're actually considered a city of Goddard resident. Here's what your tax basis, what your tax rate, what you're gonna pay every year for taxes. Just, cause like when anybody buys a house, they look at the estimated tax or previous year's taxes or whatever. Um, like when I built my house, in the first bill, I was like, ooh, these taxes are low. Then that second year, when the house was there and all the things, I'm like, what happened? And all the specials and stuff, because I was stupid, you know? Um, so I didn't understand how it worked, but that's something.
Matt's crunching that version.
Yes, he's crunching numbers. Thank you, Matt.
After I log in with my correct password.
Fork it in.
But it's just, because this seems, you know, you guys are very, you know, like, this is a hard, like, item for you. So I wanna know, like, what dollar amount we're actually.
I do also want to remind you, though, that this, that number two was actually offered to us at the beginning of all of this.
By me.
Actually, it was just something we invented and remained.
Right.
Offered to us, and now we're saying, okay, yes, that's what we want.
It was, it was offered by me. I approached it to you guys, right?
Yeah.
So, but I, I can make a decision for the whole council, so.
Right. So how much weight does it?
No, we'll, we'll still blame Larkin regardless. That's what we do, but.
Everybody likes to blame me.
So, well, how much weight does it have on the property owner, number two?
Yeah, where's, where's your heart on number two right now?
Between that and mill levy, those are the two biggest conditions of where I would ask for it.
Well, if, if we locked it in for your guys' ownership, though, and once you sold.
Well, and what if we even said your ownership, and if you were to, like, pass it on anybody in your family, it sticks this way. It's only if you sell to somebody outside your family.
Yes.
It's, it's sticky.
Is there a number of years that this has to be?
Up until.
Twenty-five years, fifty years, but like, as, as long as it was this amount, so if you don't sell within twenty-five years, it's on you. If you sell within twenty-five years, you get the benefit or?
See, and as long as they live there, I don't want them to have to pay that rate.
So all the, all three property owners.
Put a timeline.
No.
All, all three property owners have discussed this, and since it was offered to us, this is what we came up with. Um, so we're gonna have to talk to Kelvin, probably Glenn, and everybody else just to renegotiate this. Depending on what you guys are offering us, because we, we don't know. We were, we were offered one thing, buried to gain the house.
Well, we gotta figure out what we're offering here. So they know what the hell they need to go do.
I mean, just to remind you, you guys did vote on this in that meeting back in, like, April, and you guys all agreed to it.
Well, we have voted on the bond issuance. We have voted on the bond issuance.
If you voted, if, if MICA could mediate with us an agreement that would include that ending.
I don't remember any discussion of, of those terms.
We, we did not because.
We can't leave it in.
Yeah.
No, I'm trying to pull it up.
Recall a great, yeah.
What do we wanna do with number two, guys?
Yeah, I'm waiting for Matt's number.
I would recommend that it ends with, uh, current ownership.
Yeah, I, I prefer it ends with current ownership.
I agree, current ownership.
Okay, so if it's current ownership, well, how soon will you guys have that draft, just the current ownership locked in at the seven point eight nine three?
I think we have a draft agreement, so we.
Just have to change that hundred years to.
What's the probability of us getting that signed with that?
Sign or decline.
With the current ownership?
With the current.
I think we go back to the resale value on the house, which is our initial concern.
So I, I, I'm not understanding how it affects the resale value of your house. The person's gonna, the, your house is valued where it's valued at. They're just gonna have to pay more property taxes, and it's not.
Do you have a number?
I wait.
About, just a little under thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's thirteen hundred dollars. That's a hundred bucks a month extra that somebody's paying. So somebody buying a house that's valued as high as your guys, I would think that much wouldn't make or break a deal.
But if we're gonna, if, if the next owners wouldn't pay that high, I don't know, might as well not be then some, um, renegotiation around with the terms upcoming in, um, utility services.
But do you guys have, like, an appraisal or evaluation from a Realtor that indicates how much the value of your home would be effective if it was taxed at a higher rate?
But it's not taxed at a higher rate. It's not taxed at a higher rate. It's taxed at, at the current rate that everybody else is taxed at.
Just even with the rest of our city.
If they were to sell their property right now, it would be taxed at.
Seven point.
Seven point eight nine three, and that's what the buyer would be anticipating. But what you are proposing is if they choose to sell, then the rebate goes without.
And their comparables can pull from a different.
Taxes will be at thirty or whatever.
Their comparable.
Right. And so what I'm asking is, do we have a report or opinion from an appraiser or a Realtor that actually qualifies any change in the amount of your, of the property as a result?
Is that gonna change the council's mind? Yeah, is that gonna change the council's mind, or do we want it locked in at the property owner, with the current property owner?
Locked in.
Locked in, locked in.
I'd like it locked in with the property owner.
Yeah.
Okay. What I'm.
Locking it in at that rate?
Locking it at.
Whatever the township mill levy might be.
I'm fine locking it in at the seven point eight nine three.
The only thing I want changed is the hundred years to current property owner.
Yeah.
At the seven point nine three.
Seven point eight nine three, yeah.
Yes, seven point eight nine three. Okay.
Number two.
So if it's okay with you, Aubrey and the rest of the council, we direct staff to amend the agreement, change the agreement, send it to them this week, have it to them by the end of this week. And we need to set a time limit. If we don't have a signed agreement, we move on. The deal's done, and we take the money and we do something else because we can't waste any more time. When do we, when do we want that? By the next meeting?
Thirty days from now.
I think thirty days from now, because they know what the wording will be, so.
Which is two meetings?
Well, I mean, if it's thirty days, yeah, that's a month.
I think it's fair. I mean, that's, I mean.
Thirty days from now?
This needs to happen.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, thirty days from now would be October eighteenth, which is two days after two meetings from now. So we discuss it the third meeting from now. We wouldn't be able to discuss it again until November.
November.
November sixth.
We'll address it on two meetings from now.
Can we address it on the sixteenth of October? Can we, because that's twenty-eight days. Can we just say that?
Just the, whatever.
Instead of thirty, can we just push it to twenty-eight? That way, okay. So by the sixteenth of October is when we're gonna cut.
We need to, we need to have a decision. So do we need to make a motion, or do you guys just know what to do?
Because, because the way it'll work is if they're agreeable to it, they'll sign it, and that comes back to you.
Then we approve or.
Yeah, and if they don't agree.
We're just moving on, yeah.
We're done.
Okay.
I'd still, like, follow what, if they agree or not, but.
Yes, of course, we could, so, once it's been amended.
If they don't agree, then.
If the annexation, so. Yes, the petition for annexation will be changed. We will send them out, um, and they can review them. And then if they're okay with it, even I, even if they don't necessarily sign them right away and get it back to us, at least if they agree or have a verbal agreement, and then we get those annexations signed, then we can proceed.
Okay.
We can let you know one way or another. If they don't agree to it, then we can just say that they don't agree.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
So this is item H point five. So this is city code prohibiting storing on public grounds. So the city has come across instances where individuals have personal equipment, automobiles, watercrafts, refugees or miscellaneous personal items located outside of their personal property inside city, public land, or parks. The city code prohibits damage to the public park land, but does not implicitly dictate the prohibition of this type of incident. And city staff would like to add additional language to the city code that strictly prohibits storing of personal items on public land. This ordinance would assist city staff in citing individuals to use public land, either knowingly or unknowingly. If adopted, the city would view, it would issue certified letters outlining adopted code. And if it's not abated, the city would go through the abatement process, unload tall grass or jump motor vehicles. So the city council is considering approving an ordinance that adds language to the city code of chapter twelve that prohibits the storage of personal items on public land. And the city currently has code list under chapter twelve, one oh, uh, dash one oh three, damaging park property. And we would like to add the blue text below, keep the purple text. And basically, it would outline that it shall be unlawful for any person except duly authorized city employees to willfully or wantonly remove, injure, tarnish, deface, destroy any building, walk, bench, tree, or improvement or property of any kind belonging to any park owned or managed by the city. No one shall place, store, deposit, um, or refuse to remove when requested any personal property, trash, refuse metal, plastics, oil drums, stacked wood, brush piles, watercraft, motor vehicles, RVs, construction material, or any, on any park property. This provision shall not apply to items in the immediate possession of a person, which items are consistent with the use and enjoyment of the public park. So basically, what we're saying is you can't store personal property or material in a public park. If you bring certain personal property or material that's used for the enjoyment of the park, that's separate. And that's basically what's outlined here. There would be a small cost of publication legal. It's approved as the form. It is recommended City Council waive the reading of the ordinance and approve the ordinance amending the City of Goddard Code, chapter twelve, article one, city parks. The ordinance was reviewed and approved by Robert Koykendall, which is Ryan Peck's colleague at Morris Lane.
This just seems like common sense.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Keaton, second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
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 I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the City of Goddard Code, chapter twelve, article one, city parks.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. Roll call.
That's a member, okay.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Dacken?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
The ordinance nine thirty-six.
Thank you very much. This is item H point six, North Park Land Update. So city staff presented material that can be considered for removal of the North Park on June fifth of twenty twenty-three. It was discussed that if the material could not be auctioned, the city would bring it back to the city council request funding to hire contractors and remove the listed items. It was submitted to Gable Roads to be hosted on their website to be auctioned off. Gable Roads informed the city that they did not feel that it would be worth their time to host these items. City staff is bringing this item back to city council request permission to solicit bids for removal of the items on the North Park land. If the bids come in under discretionary spending authority, city staff will proceed with the removal of the items. If bids come in over the approved spending authority, city staff will have to come back to city council for permission to enter it to a contract agreement at the specified amount. The city is also working with an engineering firm to come out on October ninth to review the larger barn for structural integrity, and that's something that Harlan Ford could speak more about if you want to, Harlan, at this point.
Well, yeah, um, engineering consultants, uh, is gonna send an engineer out to take a look at the structure of that building to see if it, it may have been designed, you know, for like loading parameters that really aren't fit for human habitation. Okay, so if that's the case, if it's just an animal-type building, and, you know, without significant upgrades, you probably wouldn't be able to use it for some sort of a human use.
We thought we might be able to use it as a pavilion of some kind or something. We just wanted to be kind of cool. We wanted to hear, we want to verify that it's not gonna work for that, so we're gonna bring somebody out to take a look at it.
Okay.
Cool.
These items, um, were included in the previous meeting when we discussed what we'd be removing, so, um, cer- a certain length of fencing. There's also the question that came up of the windmill with the pump. I believe, I believe Councilman Traylor mentioned the possibility of auctioning it off. I don't know if that's an option or not, but that's something that if you really consider, you can look into it. But as mentioned, Gable Roads would not want to think any of this stuff would be relevant, so, um, that's why we would talk about just simply hiring somebody to haul it all off and then demolish that small, um, stable over here. I believe the larger one, just demolish the smaller one. Financially and unlawfully approved as a form, it is recommended to approve a solicitation, solicitation, excuse me, of bids for removal of items in the North Park land.
Vote motion. Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Didn't rent an offer to pay for that mill?
Like you said, he gave us a hundred K.
I think it'll be set.
Was it only a hundred? So he's getting a steal.
Well, the.
He's got a haul.
A haul off fee is about another hundred.
All right, budget night part two.
It's here.
So, uh, the current legislation requires we will leave revenue-neutral rate public hearing if we adopt a mill levy that's above the revenue-neutral rate as defined by the state. What that means is the actual dollar amount of the property tax that we collected this year, if we want to collect more than that next year, we have to essentially back out that amount from our mill levy and adopt that same dollar amount. If we want to adopt what I'm proposing, we have to have a second public hearing. So that's what this is for. Uh, the mayor will open the public hearing, open the revenue-neutral rate public hearing to receive public comment, um, and then each speaker will have three minutes.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Going once, going twice?
Oh, man.
Sold, okay. We'll close the public hearing.
Mayor will close the public hearing, uh, adopt the resolution to exceed the revenue-neutral rate for the twenty twenty-four annual budget. The revenue-neutral rate as presented is thirty-one point three zero nine mils.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to exceed the revenue-neutral rate for the twenty twenty-four annual budget.
Motion by Sarah.
Roll call. Second.
Second by Keaton. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Mayor Dacken?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Did I give you the copy that actually has that?
Maybe he's got it in his folder.
Is your, you, I have a sheet in there, but I need to make sure.
It's really sad, Matt. You should work on that. You're really good at your job.
It did take you a little bit too long to give me that. Sorry.
I had to unlock, uh, I had to unlock Microsoft, uh, Office, which I was trying to log in my home office password.
What's your, what's your home office password?
The revenue.
Tried it. Tried it.
It's like my Yahoo password.
I'm not saying.
My A one password.
Okay, all right.
All right, so, uh, we just have a public hearing for formal adoption of twenty twenty-four budget. This is just a simple voice book. Uh, twenty twenty-four budget recommends property tax mill levy of thirty-one point three zero nine mils. One mill through this current, uh, uh, current valuation equals about sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty dollars. The total levy we're, uh, we're proposing is two million nine two thousand seven twenty-nine. That includes general fund, the, uh, three mils for the library, and then, uh, mill levy for the, uh, block interest fund. Home owner of a two thousand, three thousand dollar home pays seven hundred twenty dollars of the money sent to the city to prosecute taxes. Uh, this is the notice that was published in the time center a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it shows the current mill we're proposing, revenue-neutral rate there, which we are exceeding. And this is the cert, certificate that, uh, the board assigned will send to the state. I need a, uh, option of the twenty twenty-four operating budget as presented with a simple voice book.
Did you have a question?
No, I figured it out.
I was second, the second slide.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four operating budget as presented.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Oh, man.
Matt, that was painless. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Absolutely. I made change is wastewater, wastewater treatment episode UV system rehabilitation. Fluent disinfection is final step for wastewater treatment process. Disinfection reduces and destroys bacteria, virus, and protozoa populations. And the influent project is charging into a seemingly body of water. It is critical to the protection of public health and the environment. UV light provides rapid effective inactivation of microorganism organisms through a physical process. When bacteria, viruses, and protozoa are exposed to germicide wave waves of UV light, they're instantly rendered incapable of reproducing and infecting. The UV system at the city's wastewater plant began malfunctioning early twenty twenty-three. If you'll remember on March sixth, twenty-three, council meeting, uh, Peltberg received approval to hire Xylem Water Systems Solutions USA to conduct an onsite service call to diagnose and possibly repair the system. Um, their technicians spent three days testing, patching, and repairing the system as much as they could. They identified severe corrosion, extensive damage in the system through blocks from water damage due to the flooding of the facility basement. Um, the poor condition of the control panel limited repairs to a temporary fix that reduced functionality, but allows UV system to operate and staff to manually adjust treatment processes when required. And this kind of illustrates, first off, it's kind of a poor design. You've got a basement with a lot of pipes. You've got all kinds of valves that can break. This flood happened. We came back in the morning and a reused valve broke, filled it up with water to this level. This, this should have been designed elevated in the first place, terrible design. So that's kind of shows you where the water level was. That's the control cabinet itself, uh, for the illustration of the water level. This is the inside of the control cabinet. As you'll see, water and electronics stuff are mixed, so we ended up with some, with, with a mess. Another issue we found, or the tech found from Xylem when they got in there is, uh, we don't know if it was prior unqualified electricians or if it were city employees that thought they knew what they're doing, but there were a significant number of jumper wires putting, connecting things that shouldn't be connected. When amateurs do work, they don't know what they're doing. That's what you get. This fellow here kind of shows the whole system. This is the control cabinet. These are the vessels wanting to where the, where the water goes, where the UV lights are actually situated to disintegrate. Um, the cost of the UV. Okay, so the cost of, what, the cost of the system, I feel like I'm missing a slide here, but apparently not. Okay, so what they recommend is basically rehabbing that entire system, putting in a new control panel, new boards, and they're going to elevate it and take it off the ground, so we have another plug in it and does not destroy it. Uh, the cost of that system, those system improvements is two hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars. It will be allocated one hundred percent to the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA capital outlay. If you remember, this is federal money received after COVID. Um, right now, the fund balance is seven hundred seventy thousand dollars. This money must be expended no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and I believe, if Matt can clarify, that that money have to go largely to utility systems and items like that.
There are a lot of different uses, but we identified, uh, public utilities early on as allowable uses that we knew we needed, uh, infrastructure investment for. Uh, there were, I, I know the county at one point, I don't know if they ended up doing it or not, they were talking about paying, using it to pay hazard pay. Uh, there's, there's a myriad of uses, but everybody in public finance that I've spoken to over the last couple of years since we first got this has agreed that the infrastructure additions specifically for water to sewer would, are probably for, most of the local governments are gonna be, for small governments like us, probably the best use of those funds. Have the fewest reporting requirements, et cetera.
Yeah.
This is an unfortunate, this is a big expenditure. It's forcing me out of the ARPA money, so it doesn't come out of our budget. But it's one of those things, if we don't repair this, the UV system goes down typically, KTHE, let me say, ten thousand dollar a day fine. So it would take a month before we'd already spent this much money, so it's one of those things. Legal, this is approved, been approved as a form. Any questions?
Why haven't we spent this money earlier?
We did not know until now. This was the item on March sixth that y'all approved that we could, we thought, we were hoping we were gonna be able to fix it then cheaper, but unfortunately, when he got there, and they sat tech this time, that's really good. He spent three days just pouring through it. I have a lot of confidence in him and what he found. We, he, he's patched it. We are running it now. We're switching from vessel to vessel manually, which is not the best way to do it, but we're able to run it. But this, this will get it back to, to new conditions for it running.
What, what cost is the load anyway?
Uh, we had a reused valve break, and that's one of those things you go up and you think everything's fine, and it's been operating fine. It didn't give us any indication. Boom, and it broke, and it locked up, and it caused overflow water, and it came into the morning rain, water in the, in the basement. It's not been the first time in history that plant has happened. I mean, one of these days, hopefully, council can take a tour of all these facilities, and you'll see just how complex they are. This is, this is a multi-million dollar plant with miles and miles of piping and air, water, everything going through there. It's, it's quite a complex machine, and at times, things happen.
So you said elevating will prevent that from happening?
It will. It will. You know, you've, you've got, you know, eighteen inches of water in there. You get it up there, two, three feet, but we've never had any more than eighteen inches, and then we're going to have that. That was in the four years I've been here, and Mike said they've had it once prior. So is it, is it any great when a van is, is something that sometimes happens?
Well, do we want to spend our sleepy Joe money?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I recommend, I, I make a motion to approve hiring, however you say that, to re-admit the wastewater UV system for the cost of two hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred, two hundred fifty-one dollars.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
We have one of those sleepy Joe, you'll hit it on the bottom. Get a sleepy Joe, man.
Sleepy Joe.
I have one of the stickers that says, I did this.
I do, too. I have some. I'm not putting them out loud. I'm not getting involved in that. I just wanted to work properly, and then we'll be good.
Okay.
All right, so it's, it is, is the water tower booster station third pump addition. Water has been a big topic of conversation, and not only additional water rights, but getting water from the ground to the tank, to the tower, to the consumer, is one of those situations. And this third pump, um, will allow that to happen quicker. Um, the water tower complex includes two water storage tanks, a half-million gallon elevated water tower, tower, and a five, and another half-million gallon ground tank. The city water wells pump directly into the ground storage tank. Water is then pumped into the elevated tower via a booster station that contains these pumps. There are currently two in there. But once the water enters the distribution system to the, once the water, once it entailed the water enters the distribution system to a fire user. Here's a picture of the complex, kind of give you an idea. There's the five hundred thousand elevated ta, or ground tank. Water goes into water directly to that. This is the booster station. There are two pumps in there now, and there's a pedestal for a third. And there are pumps into that. It flows out of the system under pressure. And the new art tank doesn't have a, along, it was the way the picture came out, because I had to do a panorama.
It's like Vmax.
So, the tower's still around. Um, we're not expecting baby towers anytime soon. But they have peak production. The city's full water wells pump approximately twenty-one hundred gallons of water per minute into the ground tank. The two booster pumps that are there now can transfer about eighteen hundred gallons a minute. That is a deficit if we get into a real peak use condition where the tower's going down or trying to keep it full. If one of those pumps fails, we are down to about nine hundred gallons a minute, or we will be in, in, in trouble at peak, peak of the end times, particularly in the mornings and the summertime, and irrigation, and showers, and everyone's doing their stuff. The, it was built to operational pumps the booster station was, and a single location is piped to allow addition of a third booster pump. The third pump, as I said, gives redundancy and additional pumping capacity for future system upgrades. But the additional pump also allows more rapid transfer from the ground tank to the tower in high demand. This is a picture inside that little booster station. These are the motors, the pumps and the piping, big check valve and stuff. These are the two existing pumps. Each one of them run approximately nine hundred gallons per minute. As I said, when this was built, there's a pedestal and everything to put the third pump in, so it's relatively inexpensive to do that. If those, that wasn't there, it'd be quite a bit more expensive. Now, the cost to purchase and install that third pump is four, forty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. That will also be allocated a hundred percent to the ARPA capital outlay. And as I said, there were seven hundred seventy thousand in that that must be expended before December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Questions?
Any idea how long it'll take to get the third pump and install it?
I do not have an exact time. I spoke with the vendor, and I told him quick. He said as soon as we have a PO to him, he can give me the availability there of one of those things. I was kind of first server on those jobs.
Is this gonna handle density predictions in the future?
City, I'm sorry.
Is it gonna handle the density predictions in the future, or is, or is it, as we grow, we need to add bigger pumps?
We're, well, the pumps, the pumps are limited. We, yes, we could add, add bigger pumps, I think. I would have to ask, and that'd be an engineering question, and I'll probably be needing what we can get through there, maybe. You know, we've talked a lot about water here. We've talked about additional storage, and which could be possible, future additional storage in another part of town within the actual tower. And so it just depends on where we go, whether we grow, whether we get new water rights. But in the future, if we go to ten thousand, um, or more, we'll need additional storage, for sure. Now, there, originally, there was some discussion that we could add five hundred thousand more by building this tank up. Spoke with, with the company that built it, and unfortunately, the foundation of that will not hold the extra weight, so that is a no good. Unfortunately, that's just the way that works. Um, but we will need additional storage in future. This, this with other things we're doing that the county will be bringing to council will, will help us give water when we need it.
We'll burn through that seven seventy.
Oh, yes.
Is there work there?
We'll, yeah, we'll burn through that, because we don't, we don't want to give it back.
My thought is, or as.
We all paid for it. Why would we give it back?
Why would we give it back? County just spent.
Well, my thought is, if we, if we upgrade it now to look for the future, I mean, is it, is it cost-effective to do that? I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna add density increase over time.
I think, I think, I don't think anything at this particular site can solve that problem. Uh, I think this is a solution for the next five years, combined with our, uh, connection to another water source, which we're currently in discussions about for our water district. That will get us through this next five-year period until we can locate additional water rights or another, uh, connection to another supplier that will meet that, you know, ten-year, fifteen-year.
I, I agree with Matt. I think one big thing that we need to think about within that period is additional storage. I think that's a huge thing that, I mean, we can pump it so fast. If we can store it, it's easier to get it out to the consumer than try to get, than try to get it pumped out.
And my, and my thought on storage was, if we're going to be getting storage, which is probably gonna be coming from the north side of Kellam, it makes sense to put that storage on the north side of Kellam, so you're really under, or bringing a new source, uh, supply line under Kellam back to where we currently are.
But your leftover ARPA funds couldn't pay for a whole.
No, the, the, and, and we won't, we wouldn't be able to do it in, uh, less than a year, half a year.
Yeah.
Um, so the remaining ARPA funds, what it will be probably used for is the SCADA system, which is going to help control everything that we do of the course wise. And that will definitely be an asset when we do add a second source and. And that will definitely be an asset when we do add a second source and a second storage apparatus.
Yeah, that'll be an asset across the board, the new SCADA system, if that pans out like we hope it does.
Yeah, I think the other thing I'd add is, I think Brooke pointed to it. The wells right now only have a maximum capacity of twenty-one hundred gallons per minute coming to our storage. And, and by having the third pump in there, we're going to have a twenty-seven hundred gallon per minute capacity at the pump station. So we're in excess of that, of the wells right now. And so until we do find another source and tie that together, I think, you know, this is about as best we can do. We're, we're just about maxed out what the wells and what the pump and the storage can handle.
The, the way we run our telemetry system over here is, is when the tower gets to about eighty percent, it starts pumping already from the tank to the tower. Tower, if the tank gets eighty percent, the wells come on. So we have really high ratios there that we try not to get anything get low. I mean, we, we, not like anything get low, any water can actually happen. Because if you have a fire or break and you've got the tower down to about forty percent here, that's it. You went over the border. And we are, we do, we do avoid that.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the installation of a third booster pump in the water tower complex for the cost of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by Keaton. Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, governing body comments. Keaton?
Only thing I had, Micah, you and I had talked a little bit, and I think I might have mentioned it to Brooke, about what we need to do to get some sort of signage on Kellogg for Main Street. Do you remember that conversation?
Yes.
Is there any update on that at all?
No.
I didn't. That's all right.
I will have a item in the capital budget in, I'm, I'm going to try as hard as I can to get it to the first meeting in October. It might be the second meeting in October. But it is going to include a project that will include signage on Kellogg, some sort of gateway to the city type thing to go in at Main and Kellogg.
With a big flag.
Big statue of each one of you.
Ooh, we can turn those into water storage towers.
Let's make Mount Rush, Mount Goddard with just our faces.
But anyway, we, we, we really want to do something to, A, add parking on Main Street, unify Main Street, and have some sort of gateway front door to the city. So we'll have that included in, we'll, I mean, we won't have to do everything all at once and wait on it all to go through, but we're hoping to do that done next year at a late.
That's awesome. Okay.
The old signs that came down were damaged. On Kellogg, things get damaged all the time. We show up and they're broken off. It had a large sign that said Goddard, and then it had all these little signs tacked on. It looked kind of tacky, to be honest. So when they first went down, we took them down. They were like, within two weeks of other, they both got hit. We took them down, and when the Prime Minister here, we discussed putting new ones up, but he wanted a, a sign standard for the city. Something that the council saw a design picked and all the signs would match. It just never came to fruition. I didn't want to put the tacky signs back up if we were going to get nice signs.
Yeah, for sure.
And so if we can do the good signs, we'll put them up immediately. We just need to come up with what the signs have to be like. And like Mass said, they're talking about a whole comprehensive, you know, theme.
Yeah, and we want to, we want to do like some sort of, I don't know if monument is even the right word, but Angie had ideas about this too.
Yeah, we've talked about it a couple of times.
Gateway type thing. We could, you can put the base or the, put it in now, but then like when we do our rebranding with our flag and stuff like that, we can do some kind of.
Build on top of it. Sure. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to.
And does that require K dot, does that require K dot approval, Brooke?
It will. The signs will have to be a certain height off the ground. They'll have to have certain posts in them.
Breakway type.
Breakway type posts and, and certain height. It will have to be approved. I mean, I don't think they'll be totally strict with it. The signs that out there were huge and they had all this little stuff stuck to it. So.
Yeah, we want to talk a little bit better.
Hardly be better than that.
Something that's got its own character and style.
Yeah, something cool.
Exactly.
Yeah, gives us a bit of a brand. So, um, cool. I think, when did we meet last?
Two weeks ago.
That was before. Awesome. Main Street Market has wrapped up for the season. Angie and I went over numbers today. It was absolutely phenomenal. So thank you to everybody who came out. Thank you, Angie. People will never understand the amount of work that that woman puts in for the city and our events, and Fall Fest is going to be incredible because of her. So thank you so much for what you do for our city. That's it.
Sarah?
Um, spend that money. I think like four hundred and sixty thousand, spend it.
Yeah, it's, we, the, the confusion was at the beginning that they were going to make a run through the gamut of federal regulations.
Yes, I remember.
And they've since relaxed those. So we're better able to do it now. We wanted to do a SCADA system all along. It's just been, you know, the big ticket item that we want to make sure we get right. So we're going to try to do these this year, knock out that, or hopefully at least have it ready to go before the Q two next, next year. That way, we're not going to hit any single audit threshold because we'll be able to spend some of it there some of the next year. It should be fairly straightforward to get against that.
What's, what's the, what's the rules to spin a sleepy Joe dough?
Well, see, that was the thing. We didn't, we didn't want no strings attached. We didn't want him telling us what to do, you know, so. I don't like telling people what to do.
Sleepy Joe dough. I like it.
Do we know, was a traffic study done at one hundred eighty-third and twenty-third street? You had talked to.
The county?
The county. Then we discussed that school wasn't in session. We were hoping they would wait until school was in session.
Yeah, no, they, they did do a study. They did another study while school wasn't in session.
Okay, so we need to contact them again and say, hey, hello.
I can call Commissioner Dennis.
Because it needs to be, it needs to be done when the majority, I mean, traffic is completely different there in the summer than it is during school.
Yeah.
And that's just, and it needs, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Didn't we, didn't we talk about that when we were talking about the flock systems or something like that?
Yeah, it's in the county. One eighty-third and twenty-third is in the county. So that's why, because it came up before where people are, because it's an intersection that's perceived to be dangerous. And so there was thoughts about whether the city could intervene in that area. It's just difficult if it's outside of our jurisdiction.
I'm just going to stand up there.
So we're just going to harass the county until they keep doing studies and studies and then do something. And hopefully before somebody.
Aubrey?
Nice. Yep.
Yeah, you'll say everything that I want to say. I'm good.
All right, front of drove.
Got the survey, got, got the survey today. So now we'll start drilling down into, you know, setting grades and widths and calculating quantities.
What roughly time do you think we'll send that out to bid?
Oh goodness, that's, that's, I would say sixty days maybe. It's going to take a little bit to get a set of plans put together.
Okay.
And we were going to maybe go to, maybe just go directly to a contractor and see if they would price it, you know.
Okay. Now, what about Second Street as well?
Well, I'd like to do them, obviously bid them together.
Right.
Bid it. So that we could get the economies of scale and get better prices.
Okay.
I think we would be working on that in the same timeframe.
Okay.
Second Street. Because we got that survey, I got that book of the survey just today.
Okay, now, in regards to Harland's comment about just sending it out, are we able to do that? To a contract, get a bid? Or do we have to?
Well, that's one I don't know if you're purchasing whatever the cities, I don't know what the cities.
We'd have to take a look at it.
Okay, all right. Well, you guys hash that out. I want to just do it. I want to get her done.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then water agreement, I know that you're repused from that with, well, your, with Evergy or, I don't know how much I'm supposed to say right now, but with, with Evergy in Colwich, have we made any progress on that water reserve up in Colwich?
So I spoke with Tom Adrian yesterday.
Okay.
We scheduled a meeting to meet with him this Thursday.
This Thursday? Okay.
He's going to represent us in water rights negotiations.
Okay, okay. Is it coming along nicely or do we know?
Letter's been drafted. I've sent him the letter. He's reviewed the letter. So he wants to meet with us on Thursday collectively, Public Works Director, Harland, Matt, Terry, myself. Ryan can't be there, obviously, he has to accuse himself, but that would basically help us draft our negotiation tactics to move forward with speaking with Evergy to acquire more water.
Awesome. Very good. Okay, and then the square cents per square foot fee structure?
Yeah, I looked at Mays. So Mays is slightly different than Wichita. So Wichita has a square foot fee. That was that ordinance that I sent to Robert, kind of emulated that fee. Robert didn't like, Robert Corcoran didn't like our square foot fee. He thought it was too arbitrary. And so I looked at Mays' calculation. It was actually based on the last three averages from the last three developments that they did. They averaged it together to come up with a calculation. I think Robert might be more inclined that way. I don't know if that's how we want to do it or not.
Well, that would make sense. And then if we here in two years wanted to do a new calculation, could we, could we do that, I would assume? Okay.
Yeah, it would be updated the way, certainly would be updated our current.
Now, if we did the last three developments, would it come out roughly close to what Wichita's at? We don't want to be more, huh?
I'm not sure if it would or not.
Okay.
Honestly, I'd have to look at it. But I think the water and sewer rock, you know, broke in Harland. I don't know if you guys, I mean, originally, we were bidding high in twenty twenty-two, and then they came down.
Bids are, bids are becoming more attractive now.
So it might actually be lower than Wichita's current static rate.
Okay, well, we don't want to be too much lower, but I mean, we don't want to be over either.
You know how those attorneys are.
We're right there in the sweet spot.
There are attorneys out there always complaining about things, so.
Okay, all right. Well, just as long as I'd like to bring that to council as soon as possible.
As soon as the attorneys go with it.
Okay, yeah, whenever the attorneys are good with it, because if we were to get that in place and start collecting those fees, we can have a, start getting a war chest built up. So that would be really nice. Okay, I don't have any other comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
To adjourn.
Motion by Sarah, second by Keaton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.